The first. We're gonna start on time. We'll call to order the December eighth, six. I gotta get my glasses on. That's why I was coming down. Twenty twenty-two, full city council meeting. The clerk will call the rule.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Where'd he go?
He's here somewhere.
No, he's not.
He ran away.
Governor?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Maldonado Velez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Cuello?
Here.
Ivy Vera? Jay Rivera?
He was here too.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
The city of Hoyok. And my colleagues.
And Peter Tomlin.
Couple, Peter Tomlin.
A couple of things, Councilor Malan Velez, your name was pulled first. Congratulations, you don't get a prize. But you'll be called first for voting purposes. Two, good evening to everyone watching from home. Also say hello to Miles, Molly, and Mac. They said if I didn't say that tonight, I would get in trouble. So I did say it. Also, I'd ask for a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we lost two really good people that the city of Hoyok can't thank enough for their service and just great people. One is Attorney Harold Brunel, former city solicitor for the city of Hoyok for thirteen years, if I'm correct.
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years, and then started his prior practice, and just a great family man, great asset to the city of Hoyok, as well as a friend to this chamber. Anytime we had issues, he was always here, and just a true gentleman and family man. Also...
Family member of mine, Roger Reedie Senior. Ninety-six glorious years, Roger. Todd, hold together for tonight, but today was his funeral. Just a wonderful human being. If you look at the history of Roger, you know, at age twelve, carrying ice buckets to deliver throughout the city of Hoyok to take care of his family, his mom, his kids, or his siblings. And then, as he grew up and started Roger, not Roger, but Reedie Oil, heating and air, so on and so forth, just a true family man, true Hoyoker, and just a wonderful, wonderful human being. My favorite story today, when we were at church, was, you know, he had some stress issues growing up, you know, worked hard, his day was not nine to five. It was three AM to, you know, go to bed at ten o'clock at night. And he just worked, but the family was number one. And the doctor said, "We gotta get the stress down, we gotta get the stress down on ya. Have cigars, take some cigars once a night, have a stogie, and then do a highball." And as I got to know him, cigars had to go away because that was bad for ya. But he still had the highball. And one thing I'll say to Roger tonight is, I can't drink it here, but the one thing he did love was his old granddad. To you, Roger, I salute you. I love you. I'll miss you, Papa. And on behalf of one of the family members who asked me to read it tonight, the party may be over in this lifetime, Daddy, but it's only beginning in heaven with your bride. I miss you, Papa. I love you. Thank you for everything. Move our hands, please. Thank you. Tough year.
Hey, Todd, I did wanna mention one thing, too. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it, but Harold's father was also president of the Board of Aldermen, too, Ernie, and, you know, long, long history with the city. And obviously, these are just two tremendous people you just mentioned there, so...
Lot of loss.
We're gonna, we're gonna miss these two tremendous Hoyokers, so...
Items laid on the table. Item one, Commandant Dornitz, who was referred. Resolutions to support, is that still waiting on that one?
Can I...
Councilor Malan Velez?
Yeah, I'm just, and it's been here on the while, so can we get an update? Who are we waiting for exactly for?
Planning.
Planning, at first, it was the state, and I think then planning, too.
Okay, is it possible to, like, request an update or something from planning as to, like, where we're at? I just know this has been something laid on the table for, like, five months, four months at this point, so I just wanna...
I think we're waiting on the state for something, and then planning was supposed to follow up once that was done. So we can always follow up with planning to get a final confirmation on that one?
Sure, thank you, that'd be great.
So we'll leave that one there. Two, order, Hoyok School Department, donation.
Copy, this was referred to the Law Department for a legal opinion. Any gifts that the city receives needs approval of this legislative body. The position of the schools was that the school department and under receivership with the state do not need the permission of the city council to accept the gift. I don't believe we've heard back from the Law Department yet.
Law Department's online, anything from the Law Department?
Good evening, councilors, no, I'm afraid I have nothing to report for this meeting.
Okay, so leave that one there. Two, three is the bulletproof vest partnership.
A point of order, Mr. President, I believe we adopted this at our last meeting, I could be wrong, but...
I thought we did two, but was there something missing, or?
You know, what happened is they, it was missing from the packet after the meeting, and caution, we're gonna put it back just to be sure.
What was missing?
The committee report part of it.
Oh, is this another Joe McGivern thing again?
I can't be blamed for this one. I don't think many...
I'm only...
I just read them.
We did vote on it, but there was a...
We did vote on it, but when she went to record them after the meeting, if she couldn't find it in the packet with the rest of the materials from the meeting.
But the meeting, the meeting's recorded, if we took a vote, it's a vote. We can't, we actually can't do another vote, we can't reconsider, and we can't do anything different.
Can they play the tape back, or?
If anything, it's going back to the minutes of the meeting to do that, so... All right, so that is, we'll move on to four. Four is finance. Design feasibility, yep.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take item four off the table along with item thirty-nine and a quick explanation.
In a second.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up four and thirty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thirty-nine is the city appropriate the amount of two-hundred-seventy-five thousand for purpose of paying the cost of the design study for H.B. Lawrence School, which would be windows door replacement, and the McMahon Elementary School, and Dunning School, and then there's a laundry list of other things. So motion is to receive and adopt, under discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Real quick, as reported at the last meeting, the MSBA has invited and welcomed the city to participate in an RARP program, which accelerated repairs for the schools, as mentioned, and as reported with the proposal from Whitney Anderson and our receiver, Superintendent Anthony Soto. The mayor's proposing, and proposed at the Finance Committee level, that a bond would be appropriate to allow this design phase to go forward. However, it's not his intentions to borrow money for this. And he is looking into ARPA monies and possible other funding sources that would pay for the, this phase of it, even including the actual, not construction, but the actual, well, construction phase of it itself. Those are not ready yet, we have time, the time constraints bring us to close to the mid end of January, so I would suggest that we lay both of these together on the table. And I talked to Mayor Garcia earlier this evening, he will have something in addition before us, and we'll have a clearer path on what our next vote is.
All right, so motions, take four and thirty-nine and lay on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, public comment. The sheet here. I do have one signed up for the chamber, it's John Rivera, one-twenty-five Cabot Street. Make sure the microphone's on.
Mic check.
Turn it over to you.
Sweet. John J.R. Rivera, how you guys doing? One-twenty-five Cabot Street, apartment number four. I am here today to discuss specifically kind of opposition to order, I think it's number twenty-two K. I wish that there could be a little bit more of an explanation on that seventy, seventy thousand dollars to a, I think it, believe it's a planning manager. I think that we could use these funds elsewhere. The city of Hoyok desperately needs these cannabis impact funds. Specifically, you know, one example is trash cans. We desperately need trash cans, there's tons of litter on the streets. Secondly, I'm here to discuss December, December twelfth's meeting at six-thirty PM, led by the Public Safety, I think it's Committee. I hopeful, hopefully see all of you there at that meeting, at that town hall. We're looking forward to seeing the Public Safety Committee at that meeting, as well as any city council that can make it out there. Tenants are very, very much going through crises all over America, and Hoyok is no stranger to the crises of housing that we're all going through. Ward one is ninety percent tenants, and we're going through very similar things as to what's going on over at Springfield Gardens, if folks watch the news today at five-thirty PM, specifically with Mount Hoyok management. Hope to see you all there, and thank you so much for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone online? No, seen none. On to Communications. Number five is a settlement agreement between the city of Hoyok and the UPS EU, Local four-twenty-four.
If we could, Mr. President, suspend the rules to take up items twenty-two M and twenty-two O with this matter?
Second.
Motion to suspend rules, take up twenty-two M and O as a package with number five, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Twenty-two M is community of finance, who's referred, three thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars from retirement to principal clerk. And O is twelve thousand five twenty-nine from office manager to a list of areas, which would be superintendent, outdoors, foreman, highway, so on and so forth. Motion to be received, adopt, pass the first reading, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee took this, these transfers up at our last meeting. We, as everyone knows, do not vote on MOAs, however, it is important that we have a copy of the MOA before we discuss appropriations, whether to be by transfer or within the budget itself. We learned that this is the Supervisor's Unit, Local four-twenty-four of the Board of Public Works, DPW, and the transfers would cover what would be increases in the first year, which is this year, one dollar per hour, the second year, one dollar per hour, and the third year, two percent. Total impact on the budget is twenty-two thousand one thirteen in each of the first two years. The transfers before us, the, the surpluses from office manager, as we know, there's been an acting out of grade with the office manager at one point for superintendent, and it goes into, as you can see, each of the individuals, which would be this year, the two thousand eighty-eight dollars into each of the individuals who belong to this, to this local, to DPW. The one exception is also in the local, is the principal clerk stenographer. This principal clerk stenographer is responsible for the interaction and reconciling of the other books with the sewer waste treatment plant itself. The money, therefore, is coming from the retirement benefits within that budget itself, which at this point show a surplus, will show a surplus at the end of the year. The committee feels that the, this group is well-deserved of this, of this raise. It's actually pretty much long overdue, and we ask that the city council take into consideration and adopt the transfers, which would be the last step of ratifying the agreed MOA between the city and the Local four-two-four.
Councilor Jordan?
Yeah, just very briefly, also want to agree with the chairman. These workers have not received in the past the type of cost of living adjustments and increases that were necessary for their positions. Strongly in support of this, the DPW has been really a sort of silent hero for the city, doing a lot of tremendous work, and these people are woefully underpaid largely. And it's good to see these type of increases for these type of positions because these people do a lot of tremendous work for the city, and this is, this really is long overdue. So this is a great investment in our people to try and give them a living wage.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yeah, I agree, it's definitely well-deserved by these workers, and for years, they've been doing a lot of the bulk of the work in the city that people sometimes don't realize is taken care of with our tax dollars, and they know for me, definitely, because when I do see them out and about or doing their jobs, I really show the appreciation that they do, and hopefully that, as the years go on, they'll be more appreciated in the, in the funding. Getting, getting this, this raise will help fill these, these positions in this department because everybody knows in this, on this board and in the city, the amount of work that they do, and a lot of times it goes unnoticed.
So motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, the clerk will call, yes, you're running for M and, and, M and O, sorry.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
We vote approve those. Six is minutes of the meeting for November first and November fifteenth. Motion to be receive and adopt.
Second. Second.
Changes, any, nothing, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven is a letter from the Building Department, tenure overview impact report.
Motion to receive. Receive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eight is from the gas electric regarding the energy update for the winter of twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Everyone get a copy of this?
Yep.
Received with a, yeah, received with a brief comment?
Yeah, Councilor Jane?
Um, yes, I had requested, because I'm sure, like you, I hear from constituents about the ever cost, you know, the ever-increasing cost of living. And inflation's very real for a lot of people, for most people, if not for all people. And this is certainly no exception. I thought it was important that we go out there and begin to give our constituents a sense of where, where this is all going for this winter. And unfortunately, two concerns that were out there. One was availability of energy, that we can report, no issue. The second issue is the cost, and the cost unfortunately is going up. The GNE reports that for this winter, it looks like a ten percent increase in electricity is forecasted, and a thirty-two percent increase in natural gas. So this is gonna hit Hoyok families hard, and the thing that I appreciate of the Hoyok Gas and Electric is they're willing to work with people, to do budget plans, to see what they can do, to, to make sure that their families stay warm without going, you know, tremendously in debt. So if people are struggling with these costs, they're encouraged to call the gas and electric, and they are making themselves available for these type of arrangements to help. Perhaps they qualify for fuel assistance or other programs that are out there, and people should avail themselves of these programs if they can. But I thought it was really appreciated how quickly the GNE responded to the request for information. Thank you.
All right, so motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine is the Mass Trails Grant. So I guess it's an update on it?
Yeah, Mr. President, why don't you take nine and ten as a package, one just a motion to receive? I'm gonna make a brief comment.
All right, so motion is to receive, take up nine and ten as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councilor Bartley?
I, I, while I greatly appreciate the update and compliance with the city ordinance, these two reports are from June twenty-one, and so, but I like, I like the layout, and I like the summary. So my hope is that we'll get more city departments to comply with the ordinance that we passed a few years back relative to updating the council on, on grants, once, once they're done. But I, I'm not sure, maybe Cynthia put together the layout the way it is, it, it reads really easy, and it's, it's helpful to, to me to understand this. I guess I would probably ask for maybe a little, little expansion on it, but, and maybe a little more timely reporting. But nevertheless, it's, it's a pretty good start, and my hope is that Jeff will, at some point, just send out little reminders to, to other grant awardees that this is a requirement by ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Just if I could make a friendly amendment and suggest that we refer it to the Finance Committee, but that we keep a archive of these reports as they come in for future reference when other grants come before us, not for discussion, but just for, for copies.
Second.
Real quick?
Yeah, Councilor Rivera?
Thank you for bringing this up, Councilor Bartley. This is the first time I've heard of that. So this is a requirement for all departments that apply for grants, right?
Yep.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you again, Mr. Bartley, for bringing that up.
Okay.
All right, so motion is to receive these, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and that's what you needed, just receiving these?
Jennifer reached out to me and asked. Jennifer from what, said she can try more today.
Okay. Eleven is the feasibility study for Main Street.
Yeah, this one's gonna be a motion to receive as well. I, I think we had this already, Mr. President, I'm almost certain we, this came through the council once, but...
All right, so motion is to receive, unless there's any comments or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Were we given a PDF version of this in our attachments?
I have one, Kevin, if you want it.
Okay.
Yeah, it should have been one.
All right, thank you.
Twelve is...
Mr. President, this is gonna be a motion to receive and refer to DGR, for hopefully we can have a, a discussion with one or two of the committee members.
Second.
This is the Whiting Street Reservoir Committee report. Motion to be received, sent to DGNR to invite people in, Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, so this was set up by ordinance a couple of years ago, Mike and Sullivan, yours truly, and a couple of the councilors, we sort of put this together, and, and we put into ordinance to make sure this committee came together. We had really good, robust hearings to get the committee members appointed from the, this depart, from this council and the mayor, and now they, after a couple of years of hard work, led by Mrs. Panich, and seven or eight committee members, the names are all in the report, who did a lot of work over the COVID time, sadly, but they put a lot of work into it, and, and I think it's a, it's a worthwhile report. We're not all gonna agree with everything in there, but we all are gonna agree with the great effort that the committee members put forth, volunteers all. So my hope is that we'll send this to DGR, we'll invite Mrs. Panich and/or any other committee members, and maybe just ask them questions for twenty, thirty minutes, thank you.
Can we send a copy also to the Water Commission?
It's all motion.
All right, so if the public wants a copy of this, it is on the website, you can pull it up. Thank you, Jeffrey. Under Boards and Commissions. And then, so motion is to receive, sent to DP, DGNR, and a copy to the Water. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, if we take thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen as a package?
Motion to suspend rules, take up thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Thirteen is Park and Rec, minutes for September twentieth, and then Fire Commission, October twentieth, and redevelopment authority for October twentieth, motion is to receive those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we take sixteen, seventeen?
As a package.
As a package, please, and send to ordinance, please?
Motion is take up sixteen, seventeen as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixteen is the Evergreen new special permit for One Cabot Street, and seventeen is a petition for a new special permit for One Cabot Street. Those are both to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can we take eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as a package, Mr. President, and approve them, assuming they paid all the, whatever they gotta pay?
Motion is take up eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let me just go through. Everything is current. So motion would be to receive and approve renewal of the home occupant, occupant of two sixty-seven Southampton Road. Nineteen is for four fifteen Ingleside Massage Yoga Business, and then twenty is for electrical company at seventy-nine Merrick Ave. So motion is to receive and grant the renewals, clerk will call, yes, you're...
With all currently existing pre...
With all the conditions still that were...
Yeah, carry over all those.
For all three.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Cuello?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Governor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve those. President's report, there's a few things. One, the Christmas tree lighting took place here. I thank Park and Rec, the mayor, and everyone who was involved, it was a great turnout. It was kind of funny, if you were here for that, the mayor did the countdown. It's like, I became mayor not for budgets or anything else, but to do this. He's like, ten, nine, eight, and he got to one, he goes, "One." And all of a sudden, it was a traditional downpour. Right at one, I'm like, what the heck? But they did a, well, I was trying to give him one. But it was, it was a great time, I know several councilors are here, Councilor Rumbaletti, Councilor Anderson Burgos, a lot of people were here, and it was just fun for the kids, and they brought everything inside, so Park and Rec did a phenomenal job with it. Tonight, the Police Department did their Senior Fest for the seniors, and they went up to Wykoff Country Club. It's always a sellout, this is the twenty-first year. It kind of scared me when they told me that, and I was like, thinking back, and I'm like, oh, they just started this, like, twenty-one years later. So they just do a phenomenal job, and it's, a lot of it is through donations. Receive a lot of donations, there's no city funds or anything, it's just a lot of donations to take care of our seniors and do a great event for them. And I know the police chief reached out to us to have us up there, so I can't thank him enough. We did get a communication from the Moore Memorial, I think everyone got that, about the new roof that they're trying to put on, there's a cost to that, but Jesus Prayer is just trying to keep us up to date on that issue that needs to be done. December twelfth at five-thirty, we will have that special meeting here to tackle the tax rate.
And then that Public Safety hearing is right after that, correct?
Correct, Public Safety will be after that.
Thank you.
December sixteenth at five PM, City Sports, which is down that way, City Sports Bar, will have the City Hall Christmas Party. Everyone here is invited, so that's five PM, December sixteenth. December eighteenth at five-thirty, it's the Seventh Annual... have the City Hall Christmas Party. Everyone here is invited, so that's 5:00 PM, December 16th. December 18th at 5:30, it's the Seventh Annual Hanukkah Candle Lighting here at City Hall. December 31st-
Do we have a time on that one?
Uh, 5:30.
5:30, thank you.
5:30, December 18th. December 31st from 10 to 1:00 PM is First Night at Heritage State Park. December 15th from 5:30 to 7:30, Children's Museum is the Power of Parenting Program, uh, Graduation Program. Am I saying that right, Counselor here? And then DPW, we have extended an offer, and it was accepted by Carl Rossi to be the new DPW Director. The reason I bring it up is, one, thanking everyone here for all the work that you've done to try and make the position work better. But at the same time, the mayor deserves a lot of credit here. The mayor was always in contact with me as to what they were doing to try and get this person in. And on Saturday, called me in the morning, said, "We're taking him out to breakfast. We're taking him out to lunch. We're taking him out to tree, tree lighting. We're taking him to the high school," and just did a tour. And he did everything humanly possible to show this individual, one, the beauty of Hoyok, but at the same time, why you should be working here. So kudos to the mayor for really working hard on this one and getting that position filled.
And Mary Monahan?
And Mary Monahan.
Big time.
It was, it was... Mary Monahan actually, actually took him out to breakfast at Miss Mitchell's. But, you know, the board, the council, the mayor, it, it really is, shows a team effort really got this done to bring in a really good applicant to then help this, the city out. And a department that really is, is hurting to, to get that position filled. Did I miss anything? There was a laundry list. Counselor McGivern?
Just one addition to Mr. Rossi. Mr. and Mrs. Rossi, on that tour, you know, it was right before the tree, tree lighting, were brought down to the Hoyok Merryground. And I, I think that's what sealed the deal, is when they saw what the city did, to save the Merryground and understood what the people of Hoyok are all about. But two, one, two wonderful people, and I think they felt very comfortable with the entire tour, the whole day.
Mr. President, do we have late files on that? Do you want to just take them up now? Just, just both of them?
For...
I thought you, I thought we had two late files relative to those announcements.
And we need some measures, but we don't need-
Just, just to get them done with.
All right, so Late File C. Motion is going out of order to Late File C. Accept, please accept the letter of communication. I have appointed the following individual as the Director of DPW, Carl Rossi. He'll be moving from New Jersey and looking to find living arrangements here. So with that, motion to be take final action to receive and accept the communication from-
All most.
The mayor.
Second.
So one to take final action. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to receive and accept the communication for Late File C. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Since Counselor McGivern brought it up, I wasn't gonna do it to him, but we were down at the Merryground, and I do have the picture here, and I'll spare people at home, but there was one person actually running the Merryground that day. Do you have any guesses who that might have been?
It was Joe.
It was Joe. It was Counselor McGivern.
So you got a license for that?
I don't, so please keep us quiet. What does state know?
The reason I bring it up is like, the first ride was like 30 seconds, and then the next ride was 35 hours. And some kids were walking off dizzy, no. But thank you, Counselor McGivern.
Would that be three McGee kids?
And me. I was there, yeah. It was a fun one. But, and honestly, for, for all the events that took place, the Park and Rec, you know, Tommy Reynolds and everyone out there, Tisdale and everyone, what a great job they did. So thank you for everyone who was involved. With that, we are on to-
Mr. President?
Yep, sorry, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, just one more thing. I, I think everybody got the email. On the 15th, I believe, at 2:00 PM, we're having an award ceremony for the police officers.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I think we, often we don't get to, to see that, that happening, but I think to really be there in the support of the Police Department and the, the great work that they do, I think any of us that can make it, that's not working to try to get there for that.
Thank you.
We're counting on our retired counselors to represent us at these-
I'll try to be there.
Yeah.
You'll be our-
All right, so ordinance, the command and ordinance, 21A, command and ordinance was referred. An order amend ordinances to include police and fire, contractual salaries be, salaries be subject to appropriation. Recommend that be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading?
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading or discussion?
Counselors may remember that we already did do one of these contracts, subject to appropriation, but I believe it was Counselor McGivern who had pointed out to us that they should all be in this format. And so this is to bring us into compliance with both of them. I believe the legal form we have before us tonight is for police with the jacket. Nothing really worth to say.
Yeah, this is just police, yep. Yep.
It's pretty straightforward.
Any discussion? Counselor McGivern?
It should, and I thank the ordinance committee, and Counselor Jordan was a co-sponsor, but the, the importance of this is, it, it should go without saying, any body that generates an appropriation in the budget, be a contract, whether it's for one individual or for a group, that appropriation should come back to the full city council. Otherwise, we'd have other bodies appointed or not, certainly doing their due diligence, but having an impact on the budget without our say. So it's, it's important to, to recognize that. And there's been some confusion for these two, two positions, the way they've changed from civil service and whatnot from over the years. So hopefully this will clear it up.
Anyone further?
No.
So motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the ordinance.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 21B, command and ordinance was referred. An order for Aaron Vega, Director of Oped Communication regarding the approved City Council special permits. Recommend that the order be referred to the city clerk to send out notices to the business identified in the letter. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report.
Okay, motion is receive and adopt. Our discussion?
So all fellow counselors may recall the letter that was sent dated November 3rd out of our planning department. And included with that letter was an update to us involving a number of the special permits that had been issued over the years since we had begun issuing them. And so it was brought to our attention that certain ones had no activity, others had some, but was unclear. So the committee asked me to reach out to our clerk, and so I did. And she very happily, in coordination with the planning department, is going to send out a first round. And this will be the only catch-up round that we will need to do to get us back on level playing ground with the status of these special permits. Going forward, they're coming in at a much slower rate. And so the coordination point will be between the planning department and our city clerk, because as the city council is the issuing body, and the clerk is the holding of the records, the holder of the records, she did agree that that would be the best coordination point moving forward. So that all worked out, and we look forward to just hearing from any of these permit holders that may need us to take any further action.
So motion is to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 21C, command and ordinance was referred. An order for a petition for a street vendor license on High Street. Recommend that the order be adopted with the hours of 10:30 AM to 8:30 PM, seven days a week. Motion to be receive and adopt. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the applicant came in. His name was Elias Martinez. And this was a little bit unusual in that he was seeking to be licensed to be in a parking lot that is a city parking lot, but it's not a metered or ticketed parking lot. So we had quite a bit of discussion about what the future potential or implications might be. But given the current status of everything, the committee agreed to recommend unanimously to approve this particular license. They are year to year, and so we'll see what develops as we go forward.
Anyone further? All right, so motion is receive, adopt, grant the license. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the approval, which is 10:00, 10:30 AM to 8:30 PM, seven days a week.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 21D, command and ordinance was referred. Special permit application for 420 Race Street to a manufacturing establishment. Recommend that be adopted with the following conditions: That the owner of the building always pay commercial property tax rates to the extent allowed by federal, state, and local laws for the special permit; That the business retain a minimum of 30% of Hoyok residents in non-security jobs; That the hiring preference be given to security personnel who are retired police, Hoyok police officers, or retired members of another police department who now live in the city; No marijuana consumption allowed on site; That the hours of operation be set according to city ordinances; That the applicant must abide by Mass General Law and the Cannabis Control Commission; That the petitionary application shall confirm with the city and state health laws, rules, and regulations; And that, eight, that the progress has to be occurred within two years of the issuance of the special permit. An extension shall be required. And nine, that the applicant shall comply with an open request for departments, including the engineer letter dated November 7, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was a complete application. It was just that during the public hearing, it came to our knowledge that one particular letter that was in our package had not been received by the applicant. And so we provided it to the applicant in the public hearing. And that is why the number nine reference is included there, so that the applicant would have time to look it over and see if there was anything outstanding. Other than that, the committee found it to be a complete application and recommended 5-0 to grant the special permit.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, Mr. President, I threw the president to the chair. At this, I, I watched this meeting, and it seemed like it was quite a intense meeting. It was about an hour discussion on this one item, operational, about that. Was a lot of questions. There was an expert there and another gentleman. Some what?
Well, I think it was thorough, like most of them are. I think the thing that was different about this one is that they were sharing certain aspects of the building. For example, they're sharing the Sally Port. And so we wanted to be sure that, how that control would be happening.
Okay. And then they're leasing the building, right? They're, they're renting it? They're not, they don't own the building?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the parking deal, was that resolved too?
Yeah. The parking, in terms of the total employees, it was clarified in the public hearing that that is spread over shifts. So at the maximum anticipated, that if I recall correctly, was eight, they wouldn't all be there at the same time.
Okay.
And, you know, in that area, and probably at one cab at also where there are multiple businesses that will be sharing space, and where there are, there is competition for parking, at some point, there may become issues relative to that within the management of the property and the parking in the area. But in those cases, there are opportunities for bike transportation. There are some opportunities for parking, which would be removed, but not ridiculously distant in nature. So they may have to address those down the road, but for purposes of this, which would be at the most half, it was not found to be problematic.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I welcome any input from other committee members with more detail.
Counselor Malonavales?
I, I think you said it, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add as well, so I connected with Frank Daly at Boston Board, so there will be an amendment to their special permit because of the Sally Port and other things as well. So it's, this 420 Race Street will keep popping up for like, for the foreseeable future.
Okay. Anyone further? See none. Motion is to receive and adopt. The clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for 21D with the conditions as read.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Abstain.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
11, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that one?
Mr. President, can we suspend rules and take up 21E, F, and G as a package, please?
So take up E, F, and G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E is for a handicap sign at 364 Maple Street. F is for 363 Chestnut Street, and G is 97 High Street. All recommend to be adopted for a handicap sign. Motion is receive, adopt. Our discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Yes. It's my understanding that we have the legal form for all of these, and that they've been approved through Disabilities Commission, so we're good to go. And we try to move these as soon as they're ready, so people aren't having to wait too long for them.
Okay. So motion is to pass the first reading?
Yes, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. If you vote yes, you're voting for all three. Call the roll.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
11, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve those three. 21H, command and ordinance was referred. A no parking spot be placed at West Franklin Street next to 286 West Franklin. Less engineer can recommend something else.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion is receive, adopt the committee report. Our discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was a rather interesting discussion, because the engineer came back, and we have heard in the past that generally speaking, they do not like to create an ordinance for one spot in front of one residence. That is something that we have not done in the past. And so our engineer did see this mainly as an enforcement issue of people staying five feet away from a driveway, which is the current law. However, consistently for this resident, people have been parking right up to his driveway, and that is a very busy street and unsafe to get out of the driveway, because you have to pull into the opposite travel lane. So after a pretty good discussion on all the unique circumstances in this area, what the committee is asking of DPW to do is to mark the parking area, which is really only adequate for one car, similar to what was done on High Street. In addition to that, to be consistent, so that similar to making no parking, we're not just marking one parking space on a street, we're requesting to DPW that they class out what it would be to mark the appropriate parking spots on that entire roadway. So that is the recommendation of Committee 5-0.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive and adopt the recommendation. Let's see, and so I guess it would be all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It didn't require an ordinance or no?
It didn't have an ordinance to it.
It's just a paint of.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
I, Commander Orange, would refer that the city council review and enhance the necessary noise ordinance and increase the fines, so.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Alright, so motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Our discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we did review the language and we did have our police chief come in and talk to us about various enforcement abilities under the language. And so at the end of the day, because it is a subjective situation and has to be considered in every instance, the recommendation of the committee was to try to increase the opportunity for enforcement by making the fines more serious than they've been in the past. And we'll count on our police department to be issuing those fines. And so that's our recommendation.
Anyone further? Counselor Barley?
Mr. President, can I just make a point slightly off topic?
Sure.
So I just got, we, Counselor Tomlin and I got a report tonight at the senior event from a few of the HPD senior officers that, if you recall a little bit back, we implemented the, we used to call them jig brakes, whatever, or the engine.
Engine brakes.
Whatever they call now. So the good news is that Mass State Police is now ticketing and monitoring several roadways and wholly up relative to that. On top of that, they're also going to work with Captain Cruz and others to not just implement training, but to implement a hands-on approach. Captain Cruz emphasized, though, that the expertise for that is really through the, you know, off the charts. So it's probably not going to be an HPD job. But Mass State Police indicated to HPD, they were very grateful to finally get called in for something along these lines. I'm not really sure how that communication lapsed before, but who cares? So it's, it's, Mass State Police wants to be here and they want to enforce the law. So I just wanted to make that known to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, apparently there's other senior officers that are giving out all kinds of advice. Because I got another tidbit from another retired officer. And he reminded me that we had passed an ordinance that requires a traffic enforcement division and officers. And we had discussed that at the meeting that, gee, maybe, you know, if we're not happy with the number of officers that are assigned specifically to traffic, that we perhaps pass an ordinance that would require it. And apparently he pointed me to the fact there already is an ordinance on it. We must have done that at some point in the past. So I'm going to look into that on this enforcement issue. But to give further incentive for people to abide by our noise rules, which are to the consternation of many of our residents and just basically people being nice and being courteous to the people either you're driving by and/or at homes, to your neighbors. We are, by this vote here tonight, doubling the fines for first and second offense because, you know, inflation. And apparently, you know, it's been a long time since we reviewed these and maybe that isn't enough. And the other thing is, I do want to say to those that are issuing tickets, we are reading the reports about how many tickets are being issued. And this council does read those reports. And I must say, it's not enough tickets, okay? I'll just speak for myself because I'm only one of thirteen in the room. Not enough tickets. And please issue more tickets. There was a massive quantity of warnings and a little quantity of tickets. And I think what we need by passing this ordinance tonight, we need the folks that are handing out the tickets, hand out the tickets. Because sometimes it's the only tune-up people understand is when there's some money coming out of their pocket. And maybe they'll think twice. So please issue tickets and we can make this community better from a quality of life perspective. Thank you.
Anyone further? See none, so for this one, motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Ananamous.
We vote you approve that one. Twenty-one J, Commander Orange was referred in order at the city of Hoyoke. Accept a new canvas business permit application. Have considered the same recommendation that the order be adopted. A six-month moratorium on accepting new special permit applications beginning January 1st, 2028, as well as a form of working group, impact fees, operations, and enforcement. Motion is receive, adopt. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have to provide an update and make an amendment to this recommendation out of committee. Because following our committee meeting, I was reminded that a couple of years ago, we attempted to do a moratorium on a temporary basis on the marijuana special permits. And under state law, after a certain date, which I believe was December of either 2018 or 2019, because the moratorium was only allowed for people to, and communities to become prepared, that we can't implement a moratorium on giving out marijuana special permits without going through a very big process and back out to the public under a complicated process. However, having said that, the other part of what we talked about was coordinating with the planning department, who has been doing a lot of work relative to the enforcement and the updates to the state law and the changes that are coming down through the Cannabis Commission over time. And so the committee did recommend that we would have a liaison from the committee with the planning department, which would be Counselor Jose Maldonado Velez and Counselor Cocaine Givner, to the extent that she is available. So that they would be more deeply informed of what the process is that's going on in the various departments in the city to be able to come back to committee if there are indeed any changes that we'll need to make to our ordinances depending on state law and developments within the Cannabis Commission. So it was a really good discussion, but we did find that we did have a limitation on one aspect of the recommendation. Thank you.
So with regards to this, so.
Should we send it back to committee?
No, I just really think we would just have to amend the recommendation to keep the working group, to coordinate with the planning department, but to eliminate the recommendation to implement a moratorium.
So it's have considered the same and recommended and then strike the rest of the sentence. Just so I'm clear, and then we'll come over to you.
Right, but keep the working group, but eliminate the aspect about the moratorium.
Okay.
So that would be an amendment that would need to be seconded to the motion.
Alright, so we'll get to that in a second. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding in our ordinance committee meeting was that it wasn't so much a working group to hang out with planning and report back to ordinance, but a real action plan to figure out how to use cannabis impact funds because that's what's on the table and that's what we need to figure out how to do. So I'm a little, I just want to make sure that whatever we're agreeing to is actually something we need to do because I definitely don't need to sit in on planning meetings just to report things back to ordinance. Thanks.
Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, I'm thinking, Aaron, Director of OPED was at the, I want to say finance meeting. Where he talked about they have a process already that they worked out and all these things. So I'm wondering if we can just ask Aaron to give us a report out at our next ordinance meeting as to what they have set up at OPED and then go from there. Because I know some of the things, like I know they've discussed on how to access the impact fee. They have a system set up that way. It's on enforcement based on the last letter that we see from OPED. They are looking at enforcement, how to make sure that, you know, the cannabis companies are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I guess just getting a report from OPED at our next ordinance meeting as to what exactly is happening. I think in our last ordinance meeting, I think one thing we were bringing up is that, you know, there's, we have great department heads that are doing great policy stuff. But at the end of the day, like, is it institutionalized? Is it, you know, part of our actual laws, not just the happening because they're doing, you know, the best job that they can do? So I'm wondering if, I don't know how to put that into this motion, but just inviting them to the next ordinance meeting to give us a report on cannabis.
Counselor Bacon?
Well, so my understanding is there's already a group that is making recommendations on how the stabilization money will be spent. So we wouldn't want to recreate that. But my understanding of the intent was that we'd all be on the same page because I, it seemed that we weren't always aware of what was going on in the other departments in terms of the enforcement and in terms of all the policy work that they have been doing. So the idea was just simply so that we would have better communication in terms of where we were at. So if there was a change needed, we would know it. I'm perfectly happy with receiving an update from the director of OPED. I mean, I think they're doing everything they need to do. And if the committee's comfortable with it, I'd be happy just to request a report from them. But we would have to have a vehicle under, you know, we'd have to have an order to request the report, not just call them in. So we could do that in lieu of this. And we could just give this, complied with if we don't want to continue with a person attending a meeting, which is what I was picturing with Counselor Maldonado Velez, so.
Anyone further? Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. I feel like I'm hearing two different things coming out of the same, the one issue or order that was addressed just by Counselor Bacon. For me, it's, one is a separate group that helps with a lot of the cannabis information that comes in and out of ordinance, that can help pretty much mitigate some of the information that doesn't have to get to us in ordinance, right? A separate working group that hopefully eventually can grow into an actual committee that was filed by Counselor Jose Maldonado a while back. We're starting off with like testing a small working group to see how that works out, right? And the second piece is what Counselor Givner brought up with regards to the spending of the community impact fees, which kind of falls in line with that same order or issue because that group would technically chat about it, right? So for me, it's, it's more about us as a committee or whatever, as a council, deciding on what we would want that, or the ordinance committee to deciding on what we would want that group to address and how to address it and then bring it back to us. So that way we are not wasting some people's times that are taking on another group and making sure that they're able, like, to attend a meeting that they feel like is going to be moving forward. Then the last thing I wanted to add with regards to OPED and the way the community impact fees are spent, they formed a community advisory committee. The process is going to be, community advisory committee gets the vote. The mayor gets a vote, they get a vote, OPED, and then we get, the same way that we do with CDBG funding, that they're using the same exact model, to my understanding. But the question I have is, what is the larger plan? The strategic plan of spending all the money and attaching it to every single institution that has given us money? So that way we know and we can prove that we've spent the money adequately and legally attached to the particular industry or business that gave us a certain amount of dollars. But that's, again, that's a separate order like Counselor Bacon said. So I'll file that order on a separate date to make sure we can have that conversation.
So, Mr. President, to clarify, the original order was to establish the moratorium. And the secondary aspect of it was establishing this liaison role from the committee to planning. So if the body is finding that we don't need that at this time and we would prefer to hear a report from planning, then I would just respectfully offer an amended recommendation from the committee that we find this complied with because we can't do the moratorium. And I'm kind of hearing people don't, aren't really finding it necessary to do the role as we had talked about it in committee unless Counselor Maldonado Velez wants to stay in that sort of liaison or however you want to define it, role to planning.
Counselor Malavales?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know, so Counselor Rivera just mentioned that there is an order in charter of rules around creating a cannabis committee within our council, our city council, which I think that group can take up a lot of the stuff here. But I think before we make other decisions, again, I think we need to hear from OPED. You know, what is it that they're doing around impact fees, the operations, the enforcement? And also, you know, how are they addressing the recent changes from the CCC that came out? What is it, like, two weeks ago at this point? And I think from there, then, you know, we can have a better idea. We need a liaison or anything. I'm still on the, we should have a separate committee, not just a liaison between the planning board and the ordinance, so, yeah, so I think I'd rather go that way.
So for now, do you want to do this or do you not want to do?
No, I just want to invite Aaron to give us an update on impact fees, operations, enforcement.
Okay, so I think for purposes of this order, then, we will have to amend our committee report based on this different discussion that we're having tonight from the ordinance committee meeting and say that this order has been complied with and a new order will need to be filed to go down a different path.
Counselor Rivera?
We motioned to send it back to committee to rehave the conversation again. And if we want to do a separate order to address the issue that she's bringing up, can we do that?
You can. So you can, hold on, hold on. So there can be a motion that you change it to say it's recommended to be complied with, file a new order, so then go to ordinance to take it up. You could send this one back to committee, file a new order, and take them up together.
But can I just clarify, please? Because the main intent of this order was to have a moratorium.
Right.
Which we cannot do. So there's nothing to be gained by sending it back to committee. We still can't do it. So it just serves no purpose.
So then motion that the order be complied with?
Alright.
Second.
Alright, so this is have considered the same. We're going to amend, recommended, and we'll cross out the moratorium language and everything else and just say complied with. So on the amendment that's complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now that motion has been complied with, and then we'll file a separate order to go to ordinance to take up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commander, ordinance was referred at a handicap spot on the south side of Hammond Street in front of Rusty's Move 10 feet. So this is moving that handicap sign by Rusty's because of the hydrant. Recommend that be adopted. So motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor Bacon?
Yes, as noted on the agenda, it's as written. It's simply to make it so the space is located properly. So the motion is to pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-one K.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Huelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Ananamous.
We vote you approve that one. Twenty-one L, Commander Orange was referred under certain special, under certain special circumstances. The mayor may grant vacation time to a new employee set by ordinance not to exceed the minimum, but may not exceed four weeks. So this is recommend that be adopted.
So the motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading?
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as we all know, this had been the longstanding and happily recently filled position of our director of DPW. And this was to facilitate the hiring of a very ex- And this was to, um, facilitate the hiring of a very experienced individual to lead the changes needed in our department. Thank you.
Further? So motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the ordinance.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Your vote approved that one. Twenty-one M, committee on ordinance was referred in order at the HPD. Come to the ordinance committee to discuss the noise ordinance and apply the, uh, that can be applied to speed bikes, recommend it been complied with.
And can we suspend rules and take up N also?
And, and take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That the city of Hoyoke establish and make a reporting system for safety issues, uh, lack of stop signs or traffic signage at the corner of Sycamore and Hammond Street, recommend it's been complied with. So Counselor Bacon.
So, um, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee reports. And in the first case, um, I referenced the discussion with the police chief under the order that where we changed the fines. And in the second order relative to safety issues, we had discussion in committee that we have the existing, um, ticket system and fix-it system that is accessible and available for addressing these particular issues. So the committee recommended that both of these were complied with.
Any further discussion? So both have been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? O, twenty-one O.
Motion to suspend rules, please, and take up twenty-one O and P as a package?
Take up O and P as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? O is that a handicap sign be placed in front of eight West Court, uh, recommend leave to withdraw. P is handicap sign be placed in front of sixteen East Court, recommend it be leave to withdraw, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report to give leave to withdraw because after these had come into committee, it was determined that these are not public ways, they are in the interior of a complex. And so the residents will pursue this needed activity through the management company.
All right, so it's to leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Off to finance.
Thank you, committee.
Good job.
Twenty-two A, command finance was referred in order, uh, the Board of Public Works in the city of Hoyoke for the United Food and Commercial Workers, local fourteen, uh, fifty-nine, uh, effective July, uh, July one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, motion.
Make a motion to receive and that the order's been complied with.
Motion to receive, that's been complied with, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Just real quick, this MOA was received, uh, some time ago, but the appropriations were actually in the budget itself that we appropriated as a body. Um, the significance of this is we don't vote on MOAs, we've already appropriated the monies, but we did want to make sure to, uh, to avoid confusion that even though the MOA came in at a later date, it is part of what we've appropriated. The increases are a dollar, 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 similar to what we did for the supervisors from twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the, the impact on the budget is not significant, the impact on employees who deserve these raises is much noted, and, uh, we just wanted to make sure that the, uh, both the full city council and our constituents understood this.
Any further discussion? Motion that's been, uh, complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-two B, command finance, uh, order from the mayor for the supplemental budget.
Make a motion that we be received and adopted.
So motion is, um, to receive and adopt, which is reduction in proposals, um, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, uh, charged by this full body, the finance committee did a thorough vetting of the supplemental budget itself, meaning we did a line item review of everything that the mayor proposed to us. This, uh, just a quick reminder, th- this was received originally on November first when we received the supplemental budget. It came with a cover letter by, with, from the mayor explaining both his, uh, reductions and his additions to the budget. The additions have an impact on, uh, less than five departments, but they, they are important. The reductions, in the words of the mayor, were, you know, at this time of year, it's not unusual to look at the, uh, six-month preview of the fiscal budget and to look at where surpluses are. Sometimes they are used for transfers, and, and Mayor Garcia's, uh, own words, he wants to, uh, make the budget as close to, uh, reality as possible, identified surpluses, and, uh, and asked the city council to agree with him to, uh, to cut the budget itself. We also received before the finance committee meeting, all city council received an email from the mayor with a detailed explanation of each of his additions and each of the votes that we are, we are about to take as one vote. And we also received from the auditor, which if you don't have it, is the easiest way to look at this, is a, uh, page and a half, uh, spreadsheet that outlines the, uh, the budget and the budget reductions themselves. The committee immediately looked at the, uh, budget reductions, and I won't quote Counselor Jordan, but he said, anytime we want to reduce a budget, you have my vote, Mr. Mayor. And we recommend that each of these surpluses be cut from the budget. The, uh, surpluses, now, there's a little division between the school budget and the, uh, general budget itself, but essentially it is one budget. But the, uh, the reductions thems- themselves, on the, uh, general, uh, side of the, uh, with one amendment, on the general side was for three hundred and nine thousand seventy, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. We added a, a, I'm sorry, that was the increase, but we, we added one reduction to the mayor, and that was line item known as education and training with an object code of five-three-one-nine-O. We reduced it from twenty-five-hundred to two thousand when it was identified that that five hundred dollars was not necessary. So if you, if you look at what we're voting on this evening is with the schools, which is very important, the, and the reason there are, is a large addition to the schools is at the time of press, and this happens every year, the, uh, state legislature is way behind on their duties. They're, they're supposed to finalize their budget in May. Uh, sometimes they don't finalize it to September or October, which makes it very difficult for municipalities who are really working off state figures to finalize our budget. When the bud- when the budget came in from the mayor, the, uh, there were three different, uh, budgets at the state level, the governors, the legislatures, and the senate. Uh, this year, the, uh, city was looking at the, uh, the, I believe it was the governor's budget, that was not the, 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 uh, combined budgets in the final total was, uh, was slightly different to the benefit of the schools un- under personnel services of an additional two hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and under special education, an additional two thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, we're just voting that as a figure, the schools have control, line on control over how that is spent. Uh, there are reductions that the state has taken, the auditor tells me, not necessarily to vote on them, but we are, um, only just because I think they are important under school choice sending, which is known as tuition. There's a minus of sixty thousand five seventeen under the charter school spending tuition. There's a minus of ninety-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. When you combine both, uh, the city side and the schools together for the supplemental budget, we are looking at a difference of a plus of two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That includes minusing that five hundred dollars, uh, from it. By adopting this, uh, supplemental budget as outlined, you are adopting both the reductions, the one amendment, and the additions as, uh, proposed by the mayor. Uh, we thank the mayor, all of his department heads that were impacted were with us via Zoom or in, in, in person in the finance committee meeting. Uh, the committee met in discussion was a lot longer than this report. And, uh, I just thank everybody for listening, and we, the finance committee asks you to adopt as amended the supplemental budget.
All right, Counselor Bacon.
I just want to speak in support of adopting the supplemental budget, and I'm glad I went to the meeting, so therefore I have no questions. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, I, I'm also in support of this. Um, I, you know, it's obviously a different approach, uh, with this administration. Uh, it's not a bad approach, um, and I do appreciate the mayor's efforts. I think he's very sensitive, more so than certain past administrations about not just blindly going right to the tax levy limit, uh, to, to charge for the residents, but really trying his best to keep the budget uh, levy down to the, the amount that we actually need to pay the bills, uh, you know, that shaved off about one point, uh, eight million less than the actual levy limit of sixty-two million dollars. So our ultimate budget that we're gonna be voting on for appropriation for tax purposes on Monday night is gonna be about sixty point two million dollars. So that one point eight million is a lot of money for Hoyoke's families and businesses, so that really makes a big difference. And when one considers that our current levy is approximately fifty-nine point nine million this year, that's about a three hundred thousand dollar increase. So, um, unfortunately, as we're gonna come to find out on Monday, we're left with not a ton of options. Obviously, I have my opinion, and hopefully, uh, that will be the majority opinion on Monday as to, you know, having a reasonable rate on people. Um, there's a lot of shifting going on inside the taxes, we'll talk about that on Monday. Uh, but as related to this budget, I thought the mayor did his very best to keep the limit down as much as possible. And then we have the job of, of figuring this all out on Monday as to how we do the split. I, I would be remiss, however, if, in, in adopting this, if we're not transparent about one thing, and that is there is a thirty thousand dollar appropriation here in the treasurer's office for once again, another penalty to the IRS for not doing filings on time. We've got to clean it up down there, okay? Citizens have a right to know that their treasurer's office is working effectively and efficiently. We had one earlier this year, a penalty for not doing filings on time of when the employees are having withholding out of their pay. It's our responsibility in this department to make sure those filings are done timely, and those dollars are paid to the IRS, uh, timely, okay? And if you don't, they're not gonna listen to an array of your excuses. Um, and we've pretty much, I don't know, if we were a cat, we're probably way beyond our ninth life. We're probably somewhere in the fifteenth to twentieth life, and it's getting a little old, okay? Um, now, we were told, well, give us another person, and so now we're doing that, and that's in this budget. So we really, it is not right to taxpayers to be spending thirty thousand dollars tonight um, because we can't pay our bills, uh, when they're supposed to, and it's literally about not doing the filing on time. It, this is ridiculous. So we, we need to get this taken, and, uh, I was very pleased that the treasurer, we have a new treasurer, to his credit, um, but the only thing I'll say for Rory is, we've been hearing from the past treasurers. It's, you know, this won't happen going forward, you know, we're cleaning up the old stuff. I mean, it's like, you know, the button that Staples used to have, it's, you know, you hit the button, it says that was easy. I almost could get a button that says, we, you know, we're cleaning up the past and we're going forward. So anyways, um, I, hopefully that this actually, we're gonna see real change here because, um, you know, I, I think we're gonna need to have serious, another con- a, a different conversation if this continues. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, so motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for it. Just one thing on Kevin's button. If it's that easy, yours was a lot longer. All right, clerk of Colorado, thank you.
Fair enough.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two C.
President, if we could suspend the rules to take up twenty-two C, twenty-two E, and twenty-two G as a package?
Second. Motion to suspend rules, take up C, E, and G, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C is, um, from the director of conservation, which would be the, uh, grant award anniversary, uh, Hill Phase One, recommend it be adopted. E is Anniversary Hill Grant for five hundred and twenty thousand, no match. And G is a resolution to accept the grant. Um, so motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Yoni was before us as always, thorough and, uh, I think e- exciting, you know, to talk about this project, which, uh, I know it seems like it's been going on forever, but the, uh, it is moving forward, and, uh, moving forward rather quickly. Uh, everybody, I think most people know Anniversary Hill Park is the land that is, uh, owned by the city, that if you left the, uh, lower part of Community Field and drove up, you go all the ways up to what is, what many of us know as Scotch Tower. But the, the Anniversary Hill Park, and there's a lot more to the history. Prior to ninety-one, this park was much bigger and meant, uh, a lot to, uh, to the residents of Hoyoke in terms of recreation, in terms of opportunities. And it's, and it still does, and I think the, uh, the vision for this is, is incredible through Yoni's office and guidance and with the help of the state. The two important things that we're voting on this evening is receiving the, uh, the grant, the new grant, additional of a five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In that grant, there is no match, however, we do have to re- re- adopt the resolution, which, when we adopt the resolution, uh, on page two, or I'm sorry, of one-page resolution, item number two at the bottom, it talks about the cities, uh, must have the one point, uh, one million forty thousand dollars, uh, available for spending on the project itself. Uh, Yoni went over that very carefully, uh, noting that we have that plus already with prior grants, CDBG monies, and, uh, I think even some ARPA monies might be dedicated or are about to be dedicated towards this. So the committee, uh, after listening to, uh, the presentation of our conservation director, recommends that all three of these orders be adopted, allowing the Anniversary Hill Project to continue to go forward.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for these three.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that. D, uh, command finance, it's the memorandum agreement between the city and the PSA, which would be recommended, let's see here, recommend that the order be returned to the law department, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, not just the law department, but everybody agrees that it's, uh, this time to return it. Um, thi- this was an, an option of hot, trying to fill the void of not having a sealer and weights and taking those duties and putting them under the, uh, building department itself. Uh, Mr. Cody, when he came before the committee, you would explain that it's an option, doesn't necessarily have to be done this way. As we know, the mayor has chosen a different option and late filed tonight is a position, a new person, which has been about to be hired by the city to perform these duties. So just because this was an agreement actually signed, we, uh, suggest that we return it to the law department for disposal.
All right, so motion is returned to law department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-two F, which is, uh, finance was referred to amount of nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars, be authorized for professional consulting. Uh, recommended that be adopted, so receive, adopt, pass first reading, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we, we've tabled this a few times in committee because we didn't want to just rubber stamp it. This is the final invoice for Wally Computers, which at the end of their, uh, the fiscal year, uh, this was not paid in a timely fashion, not unusual. Um, it was, we were assured by the auditor and by Mayor Garcia that this is a correct invoice. Uh, it would have been paid through the purchasing department, as we know, our purchasing agent has left the city, and it just wasn't anybody to really answer the, the questions, but both the auditor and the mayor looked it over, talked with the appropriate people, and, uh, this is a correct bill, and the city does owe it. So we're agreeing that monies from this year be allowed to be used to pay last year's, uh, bill.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're looking to pay the bill.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgles?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 22H, finance amount of $9,903.74 to Building Commissioner, recommend it be adopted. Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Garcia was before us. As we know, our Building Commissioner has moved on. He's still helping and working within the department itself. But the mayor is asking with this transfer permission to, when he's looking to fill that position as quickly as possible, that he would be allowed to get to the mid-range of the salary itself for the Building Commissioner. He feels it would give him the advantage of finding someone with more experience and not looking for a less experienced person to fill the position. So the $9,903.74 would allow him to get to the mid-range of the salary itself. And chair lost the salary. Anybody on the committee got it?
Um, I don't know. Check my notes here. It just says to the max range.
I thought it was the max, but I don't know.
No, it was min-max. It was, yeah, yeah.
I don't have a number. Mayor has his hand raised, he can answer it.
He's still hanging around.
Motion be allowed the mayor to answer the question.
So moved.
All opposed? Mayor?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
The conversation at committee was actually to the max range. Remember, we talked about how it's a PSA position, and the question was what the full salary amount was, correct?
Yep.
I am pulling it up as we speak.
All right, thank you.
The chair stands corrected, and kudos to Councilor Bacon, who has a good memory on this one. I appreciate it, and thanks to the mayor. Same concept, though, to find the experienced person to fill this very important position of department where we have a number of vacancies and very important decisions, and we have a lot of ground to make up. And I think I give the mayor credit with trying to go out there and find someone who can jump right in. Committee recommends that the transfer be approved.
See no one else? Motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
11 years, one day.
Your vote, you approve that one. 21?
On my notes on the back page.
Was it 94?
Right into that.
22I, which is a transfer of $7,000 from Pay Property Management Demo to Building Commissioner, recommend that it be returned to the auditor. Counselor McGivern.
So moved. This would have been the transfer that went along with that MOA that we just returned to the Law Department.
All right, motion is refer it back to the auditor. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? 22J, $75,000 from Cannabis Stabilization to Board of Health, recommend it be adopted. Receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Sean before us to talk about this transfer. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion, including this evening, about how to use cannabis stabilization money itself. This $75,000 would allow the Board of Health through contractual services, and this is important, to be able to hire people to do the inspections and to do some of the work within the cannabis industry itself for health, safety reasons, as we all know. Sean was good enough to talk to us about that, how it would work, not redundant with what the state does, but certainly important to the industry, very new industry within the city, but within the state itself. The $75,000 is recommended by both the committee, and it is something that has been looked at by the Law Department and sees no problem with using the stabilization monies in this way.
Anyone further? Counselor Jordan?
Yes, I think this is great. I appreciate Sean doing the work to put this together. I think this is exactly what the impact funds are designed to do. It's very important that the city make sure that our rules and regulations are being enforced, and that when people make promises to the city, that they're being held accountable to those promises and conditions. So unfortunately, it seems that we pushed for all of this, which was, you know, obviously, I get that in terms of the economic development component, but the other piece is, you also now need to do the follow-up to make sure that we're properly regulating these businesses to make sure that, as I stated, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So this was a vital piece, and I'm glad that we're continuing to put resources in this area, this and in the next item that we're about to talk about, both positive developments for the use of the impact funds. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to speak strongly in favor of this, and I was very happy to learn that our local enforcement through our Board of Health can be parallel to the Cannabis Commission because there was a little gray area there as to who was or could do what. And so I'm very happy to have that clarification because there's nobody that can know as much about what's going on as the folks sitting right here in our own community. So I think this is going to really improve the safety for workers and just the overall compliance in the city. So I think it's a really good move, and I thank Sean for digging into that and doing that.
Counselor Vera.
Thank you. I also am in favor, I'm also in favor of this. I just have a question with regards to longevity. If it's contracted services, I mean, who's to say that in 10 years from now, we no longer can utilize cannabis impact fees? So for me, it's like thinking how we can still continue to maintain this without using cannabis impact fees in the future. So if, hopefully, there's somewhat of a plan coming out of how we can continue to do this in the future in case cannabis impact fees disappears. Because this is something that is vital to the structure of our city and the health and safety of our city overall.
If I could, Mr. President, that's an excellent question. I was going to answer it after the next order. It's the same answer with the, what's coming up next on the agenda. The reason it is contractual services is, as we all know, cannabis impact fees have a short life-term span, so to speak. We feel in two to three years, it's going to be zero coming in from the industry itself because they're one-time impact fees on most of the companies that are coming into the city itself. The two reasons you do contractual, although I, Counselor Vera's question is excellent, is, one, if we create a position and we have impact fees that will pay that position for two or three years, we then have to find the money in the budget. And that's how budgets grow when you create positions and don't have revenue sources to pay for them. And sometime down the road, if you create a lot of positions, when things are good and the money dries up, you're in trouble. So yes, the city's going to have to look at future fundings to keep this going, and if the city still deems to do it contractually, which Mr. Gonzalez made some good points about why contractually, not just about the budget point I made, but it gives him the ability to hire different people at different times to do the investigations and to do the inspections themselves. But it does leave some future planning open.
Anyone further? So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 22K, $70,000 from Stabilization to Planning, Marketing, Management Team. Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar to the last order, the, from cannabis stabilization into Planning, Marketing, Management Team. This was actually endorsed by the state, by the Cannabis Commission. It's endorsed also by True Leaf and GTI, which are two of our larger manufacturings, that they feel that this is good use of the impact money themselves. Mr. Vega, Aaron Vega from OPED and Planning, came in, talked about how he would use this. This money is going to be used to market a lot of things that are going on in upcoming years, including our 150th celebration. And the industry feels that this is important, that the city is marketed, and they want to see more good things happen within the city, and they want to see these dollars used in such a way. It makes sense that it also will be used by OPED to oversee this industry and to work with the industry itself out of the OPED office itself. So it seems like a win-win across the board, and everybody's in agreement that, to date, that it's a good way to use impact dollars. The committee recommends that the transfer be approved. Again, it's contractual services at this point in time, not a new position without knowing a source of revenue three years down the road.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes. During the campaign last year, I campaigned on a number of issues, but this one was certainly right there, a marketing position. The city, despite our personal love of the city of Hoyoke, does no doubt have reputational issues that it struggles with. We need to get the narrative out there about the greatness of Hoyoke and the potential and untapped potential of this community. It's really encouraging that we were able to put together this marketing position. I think Aaron Vega deserves a tremendous amount of credit in order to coalesce a lot of support from this. All of the seven firms were very supportive of this, as a matter of fact, of all the impact funds. Like, this was preeminent. He made that as a point to the Finance Committee. So we have, you know, obviously, great buy-in from the people who are paying the fee, but us as citizens can take solace in the fact that these, this type of investment in ourselves has a strong multiplier effect to improve this city's message external to us, to bring development, and really get the message out there that Hoyoke is a great place to locate your business and to locate your family. And so I think as we continue to make these type of investments in our community, that's how we're really going to change our trajectory as a community. And I'm very excited to support this, and it's great that the city of Hoyoke is going to be doing this. And I obviously also appreciate the mayor's support in doing this as well. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, it's very important, marketing, any business or any community is vital, and I'm really appreciative of Mr. Vega and the Planning Department of bringing this forward, and it's something that can really grow this community, grow, get more businesses in here, get people coming here to live in the city, and it's something that definitely is needed. I'm very much in support of this transfer.
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also supportive of this. I just want to, I think there's a couple orders about creating an actual marketing manager position. I just hope that we actually take that up sooner rather than later, not just rely on the impact fee, because I think this is a position that should be beyond just the four or five years that we have the impact fee in our city. So I just wanted to make that point.
Anyone further? Can't even remember this one. Hot Damn? Hot Damn, I'm glad we're doing marketing again? No one remembers that? That was 21 years ago, because that's...
Is that right?
It was Chief Scott.
Chief Scott.
Came up with Mike Solomon back then, so it's good that we're doing this. It's very good, so.
Yes.
I didn't, Hot Damn, just...
There you go.
Last from the past.
Yep.
All right.
Showing your age.
My hairline does that, Kevin. My hairline does that. All right, so let's see here. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, you approve that one. 22L, $10,000 from Election Officers to Overtime RMM Other, recommend it be adopted. Receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The money in Election Officers, because it was a state election, the city just went through, but was, our city was responsible, as all municipalities, for overseeing the election, is money that came in from the state to pay for election officials and officers themselves. The $5,000 requested by the city clerk is to go into overtime of the $10,000, and the overtime is to pay the, during the early part of the voting that took place, most of it here in City Hall. And the RMM is to pay for memory cards and different programming for the machines themselves that the city clerk was required to purchase for the election itself. So most, this is reimbursed money that we just have to put into the correct line items to allow the city clerk to pay appropriately. Committee recommends that we adopt the transfer.
Counselor Jordan?
I unfortunately missed this portion of the meeting, and I did want to ask the chairman if the question got raised regarding, the state auditor had issued an opinion a number of years ago now regarding unfunded mandates, and to our pleasure, she had come out with a decision that a number of these election changes, if they have an impact on the cities, that we are entitled to reimbursement from the state. Her opinion then went over to the legislature, and they gave all the cities quite a number of dollars for reimbursement. Was the question asked if we will be seeking reimbursement, or if the clerk's office is investigating, getting us reimbursement for these dollars?
It's actually in the communication from the city clerk that the state has already deposited that money in the Election Officers.
Seeing none else, motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Here he is. You're up. You're up, brother.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, approve that one. Twenty-two N, three thousand from stabilization to fire department equipment. Motion is to adopt, so receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, what's before us is a request to use cannabis impact monies for something that is very important in the, in the industry itself. We know some of the tragic event, tragic event that did occur earlier in the city due to the, well, I'll stop there, because I think there's always something in court, but due to an incident within one of our manufacturers. This $3,300 will be used to, to purchase, I think it's a half a dozen carbon dioxide BVW solo single gas detectors themselves that the fire department will be able to use, both when they're inside a growing room, especially within the, the industry itself, and be able to detect levels that could be, could be dangerous or hazardous, and understand, and work with the manufacturers themselves. I think it goes without saying, the manufacturers, the fire department, OPED, and everybody agrees that this would be a very appropriate use for impact monies.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
This is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two N.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, approve that one. Twenty-two P?
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take item twenty-two P. I think ordinance had a P themselves tonight. And twenty-two Q, the Finance Committee, for the first time, I don't know how long, got one up on the ordinance committee for the agenda.
I'll second that.
So you take them together?
Please.
Amen.
Uh, suspend rules, take them up together. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty thousand from property demo to other contracted services. Q is twenty thousand, same thing. So Counselor McGivern?
Thanks, Mr. President. I thought at first that these were just duplicates, but they're actually two separate orders that came in at different, different meetings, but with the same intent. As we know, in the building department, we don't have a number of positions that are not filled, including the maintenance demolition supervising positions. Therefore, there are surpluses. We know that Mr. Cody has been using other contracted services to fill in these positions, whether it be plumbing, electrical, or demolition work, to hire either retirees or other individuals who are qualified to do inspections of, of what the, of the building department, whether it be new construction renovations, or just, just inspections themselves. We recommend, we've been doing this all year. We recommend that the passages be approved to keep this line item up to date with the demands on this department, which, as we now, don't have a, I'm not sure if we have an acting building commissioner yet, but as we don't have that position permanently filled, that we're going to very much need the contractual services line item.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak in support of this. I am beginning to get calls for people that are trying to renew licenses, that are waiting for inspections. So I'm hoping by moving this money over there, we're going to be able to let, support our ongoing business community by helping them keep everything flowing and going with their licenses. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, I also did ask the question about the cost of us paying for the service. Essentially, these costs that we're paying tonight versus the light, the fees, the permit fees that we're acquiring. It's about a five to one ratio. So that's very good for the city, you know, the amount that we're collecting versus the amount we're paying to actually do the work. So I, I think we're doing this in a fiscally prudent way. Obviously, it would be ideal if we had employees, and that would even be better for us. But even in this current state of affairs, we're making it work for the city financially.
Anyone further? Seeing none, so motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Colorado, if you're voting for both.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Ivy Vera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givener?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Your vote, approve that. We are now on to public safety. Counsel, do you want to take them up as a package, because they're complied with? Twenty-three A to G?
Yeah.
All right. Suspend rules, take out twenty-eight through G as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A is an order to explore using cannabis fee funds for Main Street, Bridge Street, that's complied with. Order that the Disabilities Commission come in to the public safety to explain to residents how they do handicap signs, complied with. C is Board of Health, use an email phone number for health-related complaints, or order nuisances and complaints, that's complied with. D is review the alleyway at Five Fairfield Ave, that's complied with. E is Park and Recs, give an update on Springdale Park, complied with. F is that the PVTA be requested to replace the shelter at South Street, that's complied with. And G is with regards to the 50-gallon pickup trash cans, that's been complied with. Motion received, that they've been complied with. Our discussion, Counselor Rivera.
Um, thank you. So I guess I could go give a brief summation of the orders that were complied with. Twenty-three A, the commodity on public safety. It was about an order that I technically filed to try to get cannabis funds to redo Main Street, North Bridge Street, Lyman Street, and Center Street sidewalks. After hearing, getting a communication from the OPED Director, Aaron Vega, he stated that all of them do fall under, or they do fall under the obligations that would be required to apply for such funding, to get these done. And he said that moving, the next step would be to, for me, to reach out to the city engineer to develop a scope of work, so that then reapply through finance and get the whole thing going through the processes. Twenty-three B was referred on Disabilities Commission, yes. So I filed that order to have Disabilities Commission come in and kind of explain on video for the community overall, the processes for applying for a handicap permit, and the reasons as to why you cannot technically, why we cannot assign a handicap space with an assigned number to someone with a parking space. It was actually pretty informative. I thank Donnie Welsh for coming in and doing that for us. That was a pretty, he came in with another person who was, I believe, his assistant, or the assistant to the chair?
She's the assistant to the commission.
Right. Oh, the assistant to the commission. So, yeah. Twenty-three C, Community for Board of Health, publicize an email phone number to receive health-related complaints. I believe Counselor Givener filed this order, and we discovered through the Public Health Department that they already have such a thing. So the order was complied with. And then the next twenty-three D was public safety, whom or legal department review, review the alleyway near Five Fairfield Avenue to determine the city. I believe it was determined that it is not city property, but we are going to go ahead and do this anyways, right?
It...
You have a better explanation, because you had the conversation with the city engineer.
Yeah, the fence will be replaced, because it was a city truck that hit it.
Okay.
But the alleyway, although the ordinance, not the ordinance, but the rule is, the property owner owns up to the middle of an alleyway. In this case, the owner only owns up to the start of it, the way the deed works. So actually, the alleyway in and of itself is not her property. So they have to fix it up for safety purposes.
Thank you. And then the Committee on Public Safety, to whom was it for, the Parks and Recreation, DPW gives an update. We were fortunate to have Tom Reynolds come in and give us a brief update as to where the project for Springdale Park is. The order's complied with. We will probably, I will probably more than likely file another order within the year, just to see where they're at again, with regards to applying for grants, and trying to see how fast we can finalize the, the Springdale Park project, because we've already invested so much into it over the past several years. Twenty-three F, the Committee on Public Safety to, that the PVTA be requested to replace this bus shelter. Fortunately, Counselor Bartley was able to forward over some communication. I don't know if he would like to speak on that, or I could if you want, whichever one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak on it.
Yep.
Mr. President? Yeah, Kevin and Pete co-filed this order, and I, I just carried the ball on it for a little bit, and we, we were able, we got a lot of good work done, had a lot of meetings. The city engineer is very helpful. Just waiting on, just waiting on PVT to install shelters. So it's going to be a really helpful amenity for the, for the neighborhood, for the, for the purple 20 bus, also 21 goes up there as well. And now they've also installed, installed some support beams behind that shelter. So it's been, it's already been wiped out twice. And I believe that the support beams behind it should prevent that from reoccurring. So we're grateful at the, for all the work done, grateful that the committee kept us in, in the jacket for a little bit, because that kind of inspires people to move it along. So once the shelter's in, it'll be, it'll be a nice amenity for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the final one was, it was an order to increase trash can minimum to 50 gallons for municipal pickup service, as our DPW accommodates piles of trash, bags, and do have required current 35-gallon size. So I think we came to the understanding that it is a union contractual issue to discuss this, and this is not something that we can more or less change. But what we did learn that day, that it is actually illegal for people to put their actual trash bags out without it being in a bin. I never knew that. And that was, it's, it's great to have these conversations and to have people come in, department heads come in and educate us on things, because it's not just us that needs to be educated, it's also the public. They need to have the opportunity to hear directly from department heads when we're here at council. Thank you, guys.
Anyone? Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to go back to twenty-three F, and thank Counselor Bartley, Counselor Jordan for really moving this forward on that South Street. And Chris Baker, the engineer, because I met with Counselor Bartley a few months ago, and it goes me a long way out. But they, they got moving on that. They tore that old concrete up. They put the, the ballards up there, and just waiting on the PVT, and I think that's going to be a great, great help to the, the bus riders up in that area. So good work.
Counselor?
Just on twenty-three A, I agree with the chair and the committee. There's a lot of projects going on in, in both South Hoyoke and Ward One that are state-friendly, you know, include sidewalks, roads, and totally redoing the areas, which is, you know, we've seen a great impact in, in South Hoyoke itself. And it's, it's, there's more projects in the Hopper, and this money would complement those projects, and I think it would be well-spent.
Anyone further? So motion that they all have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is no public service, no DGNR, no charter rules, no joint committee. Bunch of slackers. I mean, just kidding, just kidding. No, I'm so kidding. To ordinance, finance, and public safety, that's a lot, lot of work that went into those. So thank you all for, for the work that went into those. And I, and I forgot to mention this, but Jeffrey and Park and Rec for decorating this room for the holiday season. I was actually just opening one of the boxes. He's like, what are you doing? I'm like, I thought there was mail, just checking for mail. But thank you, Jeffrey, for decorating and making this place really nice.
Does that include the bottle of Gold Grandad there?
Oh, that, that, that is actually for Papa. But, you know, if you guys want some, I'll, I'll share. I'm, I'm kind. With that, we'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. If you're not, it's going to committee, don't debate it. So here from Counselor Rivera, order that the Honorable Counsel accept a donation of computers from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The donation is a gift to the City Veteran Services Department with the intention to assist veterans. So is there, the computers are already here, Counselor, or?
I assume so, but I had to file the order before they can actually use them. Or accept them, I think, too, as well.
Accept them.
Yeah. There's actually a dollar amount attached to it. They couldn't get it to me in time, so I had to file the order anyways.
Well, we sent it to finance, so we get the dollar amount.
That works.
And then have them come in.
Totally works.
Recognize it, too. Okay.
I just want to make sure the veterans get their computers.
Oh, no, no.
Free computers.
That's awesome. So to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is from Counselor Bacon, that the engineer recommend traffic calming measures for Whitey Farms Road in Togoniki.
So receive, adopt, and refer to the engineer. I know he's looking at these things, but with the holiday season coming, and I'm getting more calls, it's been pending for a while.
All right. Motion is receive and adopt, and sent to the engineer. Counselor?
Just my two cents, it's called a radar gun.
Yeah.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I, I talked to the maker of the order. If I could also be added on to that, I, I have a couple relatives up in that area, and they're always asking about the speed up there and some of those streets. So I, I think it's important that we try to find out. And I'll talk to the engineer, too, to see if we can get something going up there.
Sure. Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty from Counselor Bacon, order that add the no parking sign on Cherry Street vehicles will be towed at owner's expense.
Send to ordinance?
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one is from Counselor Anderson Burgos, that DPW add two additional no turn-on-red signs on the intersection of Hillside Ave and Cherry Street.
Receive adopt, please.
No turn-on-red? Do you, do you have to have an ordinance for that?
No, it's already, it's already, so there's already signs there.
Okay.
But people are still making...
Oh, okay.
Because the signs are far, far back.
All right. So motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two from Counselor Anderson Burgos, that the engineer come to the Public Safety Committee to discuss possible making Crozer Street one-way traffic?
I'm going to say, uh, public safety and...
Copy to ordinance?
Yeah.
All right. So to public safety, to the engineer, copy to ordinance. All those in favor? Counselor Bartley?
If we're going to change the street to one-way, I mean, that's an ordinance.
Well, I think what they're going to do is discuss in public safety first. If they're going to go that route, then the copy will already be over in ordinance.
This is just to have a...
It's a discussion.
Yeah, because I think it has to go to DPW Commission, too.
Yeah.
If it's going to go further.
Right. I think discussions first on the public safety aspect.
Yeah.
Okay. And just may, through chair to the maker, which way did you want it to run?
Towards the hospital.
Okay.
Towards the hospital.
Okay, I just want to get you, what your general thought was on that. All right, thank you.
All right. So to public safety, to engineer, copy to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-three is from Counselor Bartley. Counselor Puelo, the mayor and Community Development Department, fund the following projects with either CDBG or Opera Funds, replace the asphalt double sidewalk located at West Side and South Elm Street between Walcott and Congress Street, and replace the tree belt, install planting, receive, adopt, send to the mayor, Community Development, a copy of the DGNR.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, from Counselor Bartley, that the ambulance come before the DGNR meeting to discuss neighborhood concerns related to parking, upkeep, sound noise on the South Street location. So that would be to DGNR, with a copy to the mayor, Fire Department Commissioners, and the ambulance company, and, and the Elmwood Towers Management.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Can I ask one question on that?
Yeah, Counselor Jordan?
Is there a new lease for those, to lease them space in that building? Because...
There would have to be.
Huh?
There would have to be.
Yeah, because that should be coming before us for approval, and that's a good time to discuss these type of ground rules?
Yeah, we did ask for that.
Okay. So I just, since that topic was up, that might be a good opportunity. When people say, we'll do things, then we can say, great.
All right. So thirty-five is that the, from Counselor Bartley, that DPW HPD and the city engineer report to the city council with the efforts to improve traffic safety and concerns on Linden Hampshire Street, Linden Locust, as residents are reporting speeding accidents, et cetera. Receive, refer to public safety, copies to DPW, HPD, and engineer.
I just want to discuss, yeah, a very close friend of mine lives in that area, and she asked me to file that on behalf. I realize that's Ward Four, but I, I did, through chair, I did let the Ward Four Counselor know that I was going to file this. So, so I, I just want to hopefully get a understanding. This is according to my, one of my dear friends, who just has witnessed numerous accidents, including motor vehicles driven into a house. I mean, because of people just running the stop signs in that area. So it's a, it's, I think it's got to have a lot more thought from the city engineer as to what can be done to improve public safety for the motorists and pedestrians in that area. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six from Counselor Maldonado Velez, order that revert the committee name, Council Rule 9 BV11, to read Joint Committee on City Council's Go Committee instead of Youth It's a discussion.
Yeah, because I think it has to go to DPW Commission, too.
Yeah.
If it's going to go further.
Right, I think discussions first on the public safety aspect.
Yeah.
Okay, and just my through chair to the maker, which way did you want it to run?
Towards the hospital.
One-way going in from from Royal Head and Street, making left and going the other side.
Okay.
Towards the hospital.
Okay, I just want to get you what your general thought was on that. All right, thank you.
All right, so to public safety, to engineer, copy to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-three is from Counselor Bartley. Counselor Puello, the mayor and community development department fund the following projects with either CDBG or upper funds, replace the asphalt double sidewalk located West Side and South Elm Street between Walcott and Congress Street, and replace the tree belt install planting, receive, adopt, send to the mayor, community development, a copy to the DGNR.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor Bartley, that the ambulance come before the DGNR meeting to discuss neighborhood concerns related to parking, upkeep, sire and noise on the South Street location. So that would be to DGNR with a copy to the mayor, fire department commissioners, and the ambulance company and and the Elmwood Towers management.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Can I ask one question on that?
Counselor Jordan.
Is there a new lease for those to lease them space in that building?
There would have to be.
Huh?
There would have to be.
Yeah, because that should be coming before us for approval, and that's a good time to discuss these type of ground rules.
Yeah, we did ask for that.
Okay. So I just since that topic was up, that might be a good opportunity when people say we'll do things, then we can say, great.
All right, so thirty-five is that the deep from Counselor Bartley, that DPW HPD and the city engineer report to the city council with the efforts to improve traffic safety and concerns on Linden Hampshire Street, Linden Locust, as residents are reporting speeding accidents, et cetera. Receive, refer to public safety, copies to DPW, HPD, and engineer.
I just want to discuss.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, a very close friend of mine lives in that area, and she asked me to file that on behalf. I realize that's Ward Four, but I I did through chair, I did let the Ward Four council know that I was going to file this. So so I just want to hopefully get a understanding. This according my one of my dear friends, who just witnessed numerous accidents, including motor vehicles driven into a house, I mean, because of people just running the stop signs in that area. So it's a it's got I think it's got to have a lot more thought from the city engineer as to what can be done to improve public safety for the motorists and pedestrians in that area. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six from Counselor Malala Velez, order that revert the committee name, Council Rule 9 BV11 to read joint committee on city councils, go committee instead of youth services committee. So charter rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor Malala Velez, order that we add the rule to read youth services committee.